Public input. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's what I thought it was at first in this one. So, public input, I know Mr. Richardson. Should be some information at your place.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here tonight with a few thoughts from the Lindbergh Ad Hoc Roundtable. We've been thinking about downtown a lot recently, and we'd like to share some of that, which is kind of what's in office that you see in your hands there. But first, I'd like to thank the Lindbergh City Council Administration for your ongoing substantial efforts to improve our downtown area. As you probably know, one of the main reasons for the founding of our Ad Hoc Roundtable group, one of the reasons it got started was because of the Sunstrom Building coming online, and we wanted to do everything we could to make sure that we took advantage of that substantial investment and to extend its effects as much as we could by our efforts as well. We'd also like to thank you for your efforts more recently to make it possible for businesses downtown to continue to contribute to the downtown experience by adding flower pots and seeding and science and those kinds of things, and be able to do it easily and inexpensively as possible with a minimum of fees and requirements and paperwork. That flexibility consideration on your part has been very much appreciated. These are exciting times in downtown Lindbergh. I think we all feel the energy and possibilities laying out all around us. It's a delight, frankly, to look out in the evening or on the days and see sidewalks busy, parking occupied. And that time with many cans of towns would be, probably would make good money to just hire somebody to jaywalk once or twice across the streets. And meanwhile, if you look out on any evening, you see the streets full of cars. And even on Sundays, that's a very great thing. So with all that in mind, we undertook to do a little walking tour of downtown to see how it's looking, to evaluate the visitor life, and to look for our strengths and those places that are not so strong yet. A nice way of saying progress, but not quite. We looked at things like seeding and flower pots and available seeding and where more seeding might be needed or useful. We also looked for places that are currently not really in play that might be with a little effort. And particularly, we're looking for where things were and where things weren't. And if you want to cut to the chase, you can probably go to that last page and look at that little chart and see the difference of public amenities out there on the street between the North Block and the South Block. And just generally, the North Block has maybe a two-to-one ratio of just the kinds of things that make a walking experience downtown interesting for visitors and for people who live here alike. And there are probably in the South Block more places that were sort of blank pages, if you will, where we could do more. So we put this report together and discussed it with our Ad Hoc Roundtable members, and tonight we'd like to share it with you. Please understand that really, it was an internal report for us, and we'd just like to share what we came up with for our own benefit as well as share it with you. And there's no finger pointing going on unless it comes to flower pots. And one of the places that was where there were no flower pots was City Hall. So thank you for everything you've done so far. And what we really want to let you know is that we appreciate what you've done, and we're anxious to do more in the downtown area. So use that as you will or not, but we did want to share our efforts and our thinking and what we'd be most interested in working on in the future as well. Thank you.
I do have a question. So I do have a question. So the flower display or the flower that's planted, I think, that is right outside the main entrance to City Hall was not...
Did I miss it when I was counting?
Yeah. It's not on Main Street.
I'm gonna make a note. Re印the report and you'll be able to answer it later.
Yeah, that's the one.
I did not have received flowers, but we can if you do that this season, so whatever you go.
It may have been on Main Street.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the work of the Ad Hoc Committee throughout all of our community and in the lives of the downtown. Is there anybody else here that wishes for a public input tonight? Joe?
I just wanted to thank you guys for getting on that deal and giving me an answer real quick. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Last call, public input. Moving on to the mayor's report. I don't have a lot here. Just some random things that I just put together. So these are straight from my heart. So be a good neighbor, enjoy the parks, get out and golf, and thank you to the public safety members. Appreciate all the work you do with the fires and everything else you do public safety-wise. So those are four things from my heart. Fair housing. Gary, would you read that proclamation for us?
First, any note, City Hall flower pots.
Yeah. It's red. With flowers.
Public mansion celebrating 49 years of fair housing in City of Lindbergh. Whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act in 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. And whereas the City of Lindbergh is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws. And whereas the fair housing groups and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have over the years received thousands of complaints of alleged legal housing discrimination and found too many that approved upon investigation to be violations of the fair housing laws. And whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved, I, on behalf of the mayor of the City of Lindbergh, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city.
Thank you, Gary. It's community development director. I appreciate you reading that. And I do declare this as Fair Housing Month, and we'll sign the proclamation right now. Thank you. So without Jerry here tonight, I should have already called him down as I skipped over number four amendments to the agenda. Bill, I think you're gonna have to take on that role.
If you want me to, I noticed it, but I know my place.
You didn't give me a line tonight, so you speak up for Jerry. Okay. So amendments to the agenda, council members. Greg has two that we need to talk about.
One, we need to add a quote for pumps rebuilt at the pool water pump.
So this would be item F?
Item F. Also, yes. And then we also need to revisit the purchase amount that was approved for the firearms for the police department.
So G, will he revisit firearms approval?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on into the consent agenda. What is your desire?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Eamon?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item of visits under appointments. Tonight, we have a recommendation from Greg, our city administrator, to appoint Chris Lindholm as a Public Works Director effective April 1, 2017. Chris has been with the community since 19... Or been with the city as an employee since 1989. Has worked extensively out at our wastewater treatment plant along with several other areas. I look forward to your motion and approval as Chris is our new Public Safety Director. What is your desire?
I move that Public Works Director.
There's a check. How the works for him.
I move that we appoint Chris Lindholm to said position.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Sorry.
Motion carried. Chris Lindholm, here are now our new Public Works Director effective April 1, 2017. Anything you wish to say?
No. Thank you very much.
We'll be hearing from you soon.
Yes.
We have two appointments for the CVB Board tonight. How many of you want to rise to talk about those?
I'd like to introduce to you Taylor Mace and Rick Suddenhammer. Taylor is the owner of the White Peacock and comes to us with all kinds of background in the arts. She's been very involved in the Arts Council and has been very instrumental in making Baker Street happen in downtown Lindbergh, which we've been enjoying now for a couple of months. Rick and his family moved to Lindbergh just this last summer, I believe, correct? And right before school started. And had thought about this for a while and came with the idea that they wanted to open a sporting goods store downtown. And so Rick, with his extensive experience having run Backwoods Sporting Goods, Backwoods Sporting Goods in Radley Fair in Wichita, came to us and started this business downtown. So wanted to do outdoor adventures, and it's Rick's business, Rick and his wife. And I think will bring to our forward and extensive knowledge of traveling and Kansas in the outdoors and outdoor activities that we began to promote very differently. So I just want to introduce them to you. Do you have anything you want to show them? Or the council?
Counsel, what is your desire? Are our candidates for the Sunstrom Board?
To approve.
CVB Board, okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Welcome, both of you.
Thank you. We can grab a pic?
Rick!
Oh, Rick.
We're gonna take a picture right here. Come up front here. We'll get you in. All of you wanna join us?
I'm sorry.
Those aren't right here. We're gonna have to see. Say Jaws. Okay. Again, thank you all very much. Gary, anything on planning and zoning?
I'll give a brief report. Later in my report, I did want to note that March meeting shows a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow, and there is not a scheduled meeting tomorrow.
Probably please note that there is not a planning and zoning meeting tomorrow. No old business, moving on to new business. Item 10A, ordinance 5037, building permit and inspection fees. How was Greg to bring us up to date on that?
With the agreement with IBTS, and I forget what the acronym stands for, International Building and Trade Services Organization, effective April 1, it also changes our costs for plan reviews, billing inspections, permitting. And so these proposed amendments to the fee schedule amends plan reviews, inspections, permit fees. One of the things, since it is a dramatic change from our current fee structure, the scheduling you see in front of you, the cost of inspections is actually 50% of the cost of inspections that we will be charged by IBTS. The idea was that for the balance of 2017, because of the change, that we would absorb the half the cost or half of the increased cost for the balance of 2017 and then come back in December with an ordinance that would increase the fee to the full amount that would be effective January 1. Additionally, you may have a question of what about the building permits that are already out there? They will be inspected by IBTS, but we will absorb the cost of the inspections. And we have approximately 100 permits out right now. So with that.
What is your desire, counsel?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 5037.
And a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion per Greg or any members of the team that have worked on this?
I have a question. When the letters go out to contractors, will they know that there's going to be... Obviously, they're gonna notice an increase now. Will they know that it's only half of... I mean, that it's gonna walk again at the end of the year?
The contractors and the tradespeople that... Well, one, all the tradespeople that have a license in the city have been given a notice. Additionally, contractors that do a lot of business in Lindbergh have been given a notice. As far as we think, there's a public meeting for all contractors and tradespeople, representatives from IBTS, along with city staff will be there to talk about that. And that's one of the things that we will present during that meeting.
Thank you.
While I was certainly one of the people that voted for this, and I understand that even so, and yet I was staggered by some of the costs that will have to be paid. And this is just a comment, not a complaint or just an observation. Well, just for comparison, for the City of Salina, a building permit is based upon value of the project, not square footage, not inspections they are on foot. We range anywhere from $27.50, and that's for a commercial building permit of the first $500, all the way up to... And this is up to a million-dollar project. And then it goes, continues to go up over that. It's $7,408. There's a plan review on top of that. Residential building permits, a 1,700-square-foot house would cost you $1,020 for a building permit and inspection fees. And the 2,000-square feet would be $1,200, or $2,500 would be $1,500. Full price for a new construction, because we don't... We're not... We typically don't require a plan review for new construction on a residential property. So even at the full price of the fee, you're looking at $900 compared to a residence from $1,020 to $1,500 approximately. So it's competitive with the market. At first, it uses the International Code Council formula. And I don't have the information of what percentage of their building department budget that they pay with building permit fees. But I can tell you that on a one- or two-story residential property on a square-foot basis, of course, a percentage gets calculated against this, but it is... Well, let me explain from a personal business standpoint. It is the building department budget times how much of the building department budget is going to be paid for through permit fees. And then you take your total annual construction value. This is why I couldn't calculate a number for you. And then you get a percentage of what gets charged as a building permit fee. So the example that they've given is from the International Code Council is $300,000 budget, 75% of that is paid by permit fees divided by an annual construction value of $30 million, which comes 2.0075. Then you go into the formula to look at the type of building.
I believe you.
But you're looking at $145.23 a square foot down to $131.94 a square foot. And then you take that and times it times 0.0075. So your building permit fees are gonna be considerably higher.
And I appreciate you.
Well, I just want... I'd like everybody else to understand that while our schemes are going up, we have been way below the market.
All right. Greg, you appear to be very prepared.
I just wanted to point out that Jerry would stop there long enough. So I saw your end go up.
He did. He got that end. So any other questions? I'll let you recover, and then we need roll call, please. Kelly?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to item B, Recreation T-shirt clothes.
Man, I'm not sure I followed up.
Yeah. Let's see what you're preparing.
So as you're probably aware, we currently utilize Art Shirt for our current vendor for our shirts in the Recreation Department. And after kind of assessing our finances and essentially doing anything we can to limit our expenses, we took a look at our expenses with Art Shirt. And before you, you have a bid from Stewart Sports and Awards for $1,190. And that's a five-way five-shirt. And then we were unable to get a bid from Art Shirt by the deadline, so imposing your package in the invoice for 2016. And we did our soccer order, which is our biggest program. And essentially, what we're asking for is consideration for switching vendors. And this is due to lack of consistency with Art Shirt's pricing, their direct communication with me, and also their lack of meeting deadlines.
Motion to approve.
Sure. Second? Second.
I will say that there is another t-shirt vendor.
Sign company?
Mary Coy?
Yes.
There is another t-shirt in Lindbergh now for future bids, but I don't think the information equates here, because this is a problem.
I'd like to break dealing with the sign company, and it's been very professional.
As well?
Yes. So any further discussion on tonight? Approval of the Stewart Sports and Awards for $1,190 for 200 t-shirts?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We're just looking for any questions that we now have, and roll call with Jerry.
We'll start with you, Eamon.
All right. Why?
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Next item C. I think that Greg is hoping that we actually table that for further discussion that they're working on with that, so.
Yeah, we're looking at different alternatives.
Okay.
Or other alternatives.
Always being confused, does that take a motion to table?
No, there's no motion on the table to discuss. You don't need to table anything.
Tableing item C. Thank you, Bill. Item D, HMS... Yes. EMS honorary. EMS honorary. Greg, are you finished that or Tim?
Yeah, I'll just say. Sorry, we're moving too fast.
He's still recovering from the formulas used to...
Wow, it's with this product.
What you have in front of you is revised EMS service honorary policy. Some of the changes involve a number of shifts. Historically, it's been two 12-hour shifts per day. It gone to three 3-hour shifts. Additionally, there's two... I'm sorry, three 8-hour shifts, thank you. Used to be four EMS staff members per shift. Now there's two along with... Additionally, there can be a probationary EMS staff member on the shift. Or, and to non-provationary, with two non-provationary. In other words, someone has passed their certifications but hasn't done enough ride-alongs to get the experience they need to be assisted. The point system clarifies a little bit from a standpoint. On Sundays, you used to give one extra point for taking the Sunday shift. Now it only gives one extra point for taking the 6:00 AM shift on Sunday. Go back to the notes here. And the way the policy works on the point system is that for each point earned at eight or more points, you get a $10 bonus. And the idea behind the policy is to incentivize EMTs to take call. And those are the provisions of the policy.
Counsel, what is your desire?
Motion to approve. Second.
So we decided to have discussion? Questions?
The maximum points, the maximum equals 120. Is that for a year? Two years? No.
Are you looking at the service honorary?
Yes.
That's after two years of service.
Okay.
Between two and five, they will get... And really, it's the point system that's changed from the prior policy. And theoretically, whatever maximum number of shifts there are in a month is the maximum number of claims that you can get. And the honorary was paid out on a quarterly... No, annual basis. And the point system is paid out on monthly basis. Actually, it says quarterly, I'm sorry.
They're all happy going on their shifts instead of twelve?
Yeah, that's something that they instituted prior to the policy change, and we're just changing this policy to match practice from that standpoint.
Any other questions, council members? She happy with all of it?
Yes, ecstatic.
Tim's happy, so roll call, please.
I have another question. Do we have an average length of service history? Are we... Do we typically retain for more than two years? When are we most likely to lose somebody? The first one or two years or between, like, years five and six?
I think burnout is three to five years. So that's normal to have a three to five year. But we don't really have a lot of turnover until we change directors. It seems I have a lot of turnover when we change directors.
But we were pretty steady now?
Pretty steady.
I guess I ask because if it's at that point where the burnout starts, would it be more prudent perhaps to look at increasing that point system for those at two years and maybe come up to where the five-year level is? So you actually have instead of two, four, or five years, you just have four?
Oh, I'm ready to take that into...
For years one to five?
You run a bit of a challenge with employment law. We've been in employment, when we were drafting this policy, we had it reviewed by an employment attorney because the way it was originally presented, people were being compensated for time. The minute you start compensating people for time, they're no longer a volunteer. So there's a fine line when you run volunteer service of compensating someone for inconvenience, which is allowed. You start compensating them for time, then you can run a foul of Fair Labor Standard Act.
Okay, then let me rephrase my question. Would it be something that we should look at to recognize the service for years one to five the same way we are now for after five?
I'm going to answer it this way is, we have to really run the numbers on this one because with the debt service coming on on the new EMS building, this budget is going to be incredibly tight. And I've already had the discussion with the EMS director that, you know, we would like to do more, but I can't say I'm 100% confident the way revenues come in under EMS that we can meet all of the obligations that we have and take on the expenses.
Betty, do you want to tell me to work out some numbers, you know, what the length of service is, or is that, do you want to hold in favor of Greg to know anything else?
I guess, I guess it does occur to me that a new EMS building isn't going to be very satisfactory if we can't keep volunteer EMTs in it. But then again, I don't know if we have two people at the 20-year service and, I mean, I don't know how well the numbers work out. It just seems to me that it could be beneficial if you front-loaded that recognition system a bit.
Well, I think, and I think, you know, we talked about this with the number of EMT classes that we've held, and I think it's, we recognize that to keep people on longer, you really just have to have a lot of EMTs. You know, we're at the 26 now, which is fantastic, and we used to have eight. Well, when you run a deep, you run a lot of shifts, and your burnout is going to be a lot faster. So we figure if we can get our numbers high, 26 to 32 EMTs, and we're sharing more of the shifts, that we're going to have less burnout. So if I get tired, if I want to take a week off, I have enough staff, that it's not going to be a big issue for you to take a week off. So I really think that that's going to help, just having the numbers coming to this point.
Should we talk it over? So thank you for talking.
Additional questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Paul's security, thank you very much. City insurance vote?
Workers' Comp Insurance is through KNEAT, and that's on an annual basis. We've already passed that this year. What we're looking at tonight is all other insurance, including ambulance malpractice, property liability, inland marine, and some other things that are all listed out in the renewal proposal. There are a couple of changes and a couple of additions, which I've asked Mike Garrett explain, but since we are using insurance brokers without tie to a specific insurance agency like we used to be, whereas you call it out, the first people that got a UMC insurance, that's the people we had to go with. Now, now we can broker services. With Fuqua, Ruth Piper, they elect to just charge a $12,000 annual fee, whereas the other agencies has included in part of the insurance coverage, so you don't know exactly what kind of income they're getting. So what we're looking at is $74,368, 34, the 40 plus the $12,000 agency service fee. It runs from April 1st through March 31st of next year.
Mike, can you come on and do that again?
So, I'm going to come on up and then you can explain some of the additions, changes.
I don't know how much information everybody has on the renewal proposal. If you look as it compared to two premiums from last year to this year, below are four things listed that are causing a premium increase.
That's page five that you have, you have hit, so.
The biggest driver of premium change this year is coming into the business auto line. Some of that is from changes in equipment. There have been three, one squad car's just changed out, one of the ambulances has been traded up, and then there was another truck in the fleet that was replaced with a newer model, so that brought that up a little bit. We started last year at $15,128 for the premium and finished the year at $16,987. In the coming renewal, there is a rate increase on the business auto line. Sad to report that we're probably all going to see auto premiums of personal and commercial build up. As an industry, the experience has not been good. A lot more severe accidents, and there's a higher frequency of that, so that's driving some of that. But there is something that we've quoted this year, and it came about from the ambulance and that is changing the valuation on the ambulances from actual cash value to an agreed value. The new one, we've quoted it being insured at $150,000 and the old one at $70. Ambulances depreciate, and Greg, you can attest to this a little bit, very, very quickly. And so a vehicle that you pay $170,000 for will be worth $30,000. It depreciates faster even than a lot of private passenger vehicles. That's something that we experienced with these, they move a little bit quicker. The agreed value coverage basically states that we're insuring the new ambulance for $150,000. So if something happens in its total downline, the last one once gets $150,000 from the insurance company as opposed to an actual cash value where mileage and hours of service and that sort of thing is figured in. So that's for both ambulances. The other increase this year, there's two others. One comes under the inland marine coverage, and this is for scheduled equipment in the ambulances and the police cars. It ends up being about $166,000 worth of equipment that we scheduled with the insurance company. Many misalign these things, but again, the ambulance claim brought about some of that. The other thing, the other increase is coming under the general liability insurance. There are some additional coverages that EMC has added to the policy and a quote, they're optional. One is sexual abuse or sexual misconduct liability. This allows the liability women to be used if someone accuses the city of sexual abuse or sexual misconduct. The other is violent event response coverage. Not exactly sure what they're driving at with this one, but some of the concealed carry laws have been passed, especially for city employees and other municipalities. If a violent event occurs, this would cover the city employees and provide a definite bit. It's one that can be discussed, it's a $40 charge. I don't know how much it would come into play, but we can go into more detail if you'd like to see that. The other thing on the general liability was that a new class has been added to that, and it is for water department workers, including water main connections. And working with jury, we try to get a payroll assigned to it, it will be audited, so that number could come down after the audit's done. But those are the big needs at this point.
Counsel, what is your desire?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Just a second.
Questions of any of the team here? Greg?
A couple of questions. You say that auto insurance premiums are going up, you're talking about the frequency and severity of the accidents?
Of crimes, correct.
Of claims. Is there a common denominator or common driver in the frequency and dollar amount of those claims?
No, industry-wide, what we're seeing is that when there is an accident, we don't see cars fixed as often. And if we do, it's not, it's not we're going to count that as a dent, we're just going to replace this part of the car, it's gotten more expensive. The bodily injury aspect of things has gotten more and more also. There have been, inattentive driving is something that's on everybody's mind right now. If you watch the basketball tournament, when you're looking for your phone underneath the seat and running to the back of somebody, that's, it's what's driving a lot of this. How that correlates out over time, I'm not exactly sure, but that's what industry publications are saying now, is that most loss ratios for commercial and private lines carriers are running at a point where they're not profitable.
And the follow-up question was on the violent event response coverage. Now, you said the employee's cover, is that an employee that is injured at work as a, due to a violent event, or an employee that's concealed carry, gets involved somehow in discharge of the firearm?
It would be an employee that would be injured because of a violent event, and it would be secondary to work on coverage, is how the court thinks. So again, I'm not sure what exactly they're driving at and its usefulness, but it's available to...
Is it possible determined by the violence for the police? Law enforcement? I mean...
Yeah, probably. It would be part of the coverage amount, and we can, you know, obviously, what the company has laid out is $25,000 per individual, which is a nominal, be, or a nominal benefit amount in that instance, but it can be adjusted also.
Additional questions? Just sure everybody understands, it's the $74,368, 34 plus the $12,000 is what you're voting to approve. Rule call, please.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I'm having some trouble with the connection.
You want me to repeat that?
Sorry, says yes. Sorry about that. I'm starting it up. So, item F is full, full water pump, I guess it is.
Distributing to you is a quote from Johnson Electric Motor Windy to, for service on the water pool pump. It's been brought in, been looked at, inspected, taken apart, and you actually have two quotes there. The one we're asking you to consider is the one of the amount of $8,852.80. The other one is comparison to one of the, similar to buying a new one, to give you an idea of the cost comparison. And it may not be $8,852.80, so would ask for a motion to approve, not to exceed $8,852.80 for Johnson Electric Motor Windy to rebuild the water pump for the pool.
Second?
And Betty, second? Questions on Chris or Greg?
We are talking about this whole pool.
Yes, correct, yes. We're not used to talking about other pools.
So is, did Greg?
That's your opinion.
Yeah. Is some of this a housing replacement or something too?
What this is, is the called spool housings. They're basically extensions, the pumps themselves sitting in the water in the bottom, the motors at the top. These spools are connected together and then connect the two mother and the pump, and they have a shaft that runs in between to actually move the impeller. The pumps are in really good shape mechanical-wise, everything looks fantastic. These spools are original to the pumps, so they're 20-plus year old. They just succumb to the environment in which they're operating.
Does spools mean they're rewinding them?
No, that's just the name that they haul on. They're basically metal housings, and the high price was for the original parts. This is to have them manufactured by the machine company that they use, and they will be better quality metal than the original equipment, and should last for the same equivalent period.
And this is one pump per fi-
This is two pumps.
Two pumps, two schools, or what?
Actually, four schools. Four schools, four schools. Two schools per pump.
Okay.
Is this the only company that does things like this? We just have one quote? This can be done by different companies. This Johnson Electric was who I used to do the lift station pumps in Emerald Lake, and I was real pleased with them. They are working very hard to, very, very competitive and even way below other shops. It's one of those things where you have to take the pump in and have it torn apart to get a fair assessment of what needs to be done. So it's kind of a relationship that builds over time. I did a lot of research when I decided to take these, the lift station pumps in Emerald, and they did have the lowest bid on the quotes I had there. So I'm very pleased with what they've done so far, so that's why there's just one.
Additional questions for Chris? Rule call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion to carry, thank you, Chris. Greg, will you be addressing G, revisiting firearms?
Yes, last month, $1,452 was approved to GT distributors to purchase eight Glock Model 17 Gen IV 9mm firearms. That was net of trade-in. The officers are going to purchase their trade-in weapons, so since the actual amount to GT distributors is $3,272, we need to, or you need to approve $1,880. And then as the officers purchase their retiring handguns, they will pay the city $260, but to pay the invoice, we need to approve an additional $1,880.
What is your desire?
I'll take the motion to approve $1,880.
Second. There's a second discussion. Rule call, please. Now.
Blake?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion to carry, thank you, Greg. Moving on to Department of Health Reports, Administration and Finance.
Three years ago, we did an auto contract with David Odell. He sold his business, you know, having this ground there in the ball. They were here their first year for a lot of science gear, and they gave, this is their second year, third year of the contract. As far as their field work, they were here in January to do some preliminary work, and then they were here to do the day. They were scheduled for three days of work, but things were... They were scheduled for three days of work, but things were in order enough that they were able to finish their fieldwork today. And they won't be back for probably some back-and-forth emails to answer some additional questions. But overall, except for things that we know we cannot change, and some things that auditors are always going to find, things that are looking pretty good. Because tax season, the last day of five week corresponds with our second council meeting in April, we're going to look probably to make first report with the board of council. So that's, things are looking pretty fair as far as the auditors. Additionally, at your, at your places, I gave you a long sheet of uncovered cash balances. It's by fund, by year. You can look at the different funds, the different years that have gone up and down, the years that they've gone down. Were most definitely times that council had approved major projects and decided to spin down some of the reserves. Then the years that they're going back up, they're trying to gradually improve some of the reserves. Additionally, in 2011, we put down the special reserve funds. Before, I had considered them to be encumbered funds, but since I have been directed and I understand the policy better, I was able to start putting them on in 2011, so that's why you see the huge increase in the totals because of the, the special reserve funds are on there now. Additionally, you'll see to the left, maybe at the, and at the bottom, some of these funds that we originally had, they've either been eliminated or combined with other funds, we did changes in laws and just policy changes to try and improve. And a reason that we tried to keep these fund balances, basically is included in the fund balance policy, which is this two-major quarter I've given you also. We try to keep at least a four to five percent operating reserve in each fund. So, this, this tells you what the policy actually is and how we try to maintain it, so I'm open to questions.
Are all these funds meeting that policy at this time?
If not, they're very close, so I think yes, they are.
I was going to ask the same question and also congratulate you on the good honor and getting them out in the day is pretty, pretty good deal, so.
Me too, very good.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Larry or Greg or anybody as far as?
See, just...
Go ahead, I was just going to say a benchmark question, it really is twenty-five percent of it.
Yes.
That would be our benchmark is twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a comment, that finally in 2016, we've, I mean, it's a huge improvement over the last fifteen years. When you look at almost fine level of total reserves being two point nine million, to be at eight point four seven one now, so, good job, Nancy, thank you.
And the real, 2011 with the six oh, I mean, that's, that's when you put the rest of the bump in there, so you gotta really look at from eleven on, because those are comparable funds now. Prior to that, the special pumps weren't there.
Okay, I see.
But still, from six oh, it's a pretty good, pretty good investment. Good job, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Greg.
Gary, community development?
Let you know that the planning zoning had a hearing last week and approved the rezonation, three months after. The reason you're not voting on that tonight is because state statute requires a fourteen-day waiting period to see if neighbors filed a protest petition. And what that does, changes the nature of how your votes handle. Instead of a majority to adopt a zoning change, you would have to vote three-quarters majority, supermajority, to change the zoning of that park. We're day six now. We'll have to wait until next Tuesday before we cancel the fourteen days. So we're just going to move that agenda into the April third meeting.
Can you refresh our memory as to what's happening there?
What's happening is a residential one, single-family dwelling.
Oh, yes.
Parcel, just parcel is being resumed to two, in order for the owner to bring in another house and establish a second residence on that property.
I just had forgotten, thank you.
Is that a moving house then? Is it definitely moving from somewhere else?
Yes. And actually, our quote will require that to be vetted by the board of zoning officials as well on the nature of its impact and public value.
Yeah, if everybody understands the process.
Community garden is almost full. We only have two plots left. I filled one today, which means there's ongoing interest in the community garden. This garden, First Communion, is an example of a specialized citizen-driven project with limited furnace support. With a little bit of help from the city, who provided us the ground, and we do minimal maintenance on the site. We give a few patchy gardens a place to enjoy the outdoors and grow their own food. Otherwise, we'd just be mowing once a week a vacant parcel. It's very similar to another project, the Worthymont Dog Park. I met with organizers last week, and I believe we could put together the same kind of partnership with a similar outcome. But the scale of the Dog Park project is much larger because the scope or the, the appeal is broader. And the city's investment will need to be increased to create the kind of facility that we'll be proud of and have in our community. And that's why I am going to include Dog Park as a line item in the 2018 budget in upcoming budget meetings here in City Hall. I plan to increase the city's commitment to the process, and I'll keep working with organizers with the goal of having a cooperatively designed plan ready by the time we sit down with you to talk about the 2018 budget. Any questions?
Is the, the garden, community garden that's across from the ball fields, is that ours?
No. Ken Branch, I believe, started that years ago.
Okay.
No, in operation.
Well, I saw him telling it after.
Great, that's great. I, you know, as long as we have an interest in gardening in these, it's, it's been a great project for this neighborhood. But if another neighborhood wants to start something, we're here to support that. We have, we have other city-owned parcels. All we use mow it. We'd be glad to fill it and turn it, switch a little bit of organization.
Okay, Gary. Kate, recreation?
So tonight, we're going to update you all on what I like to call the golf course technology saga. I hope it's the last update on it as well, because I'm really tired. Haven't figured it all out, but just essentially as a recap, what we're going to do out there was get a new computer, also get new golf software out there, and then also get new credit card processing. First of all, the new computer, we've already taken care of that part of it, and it's actually here in this building as we speak. It's just a matter of getting it swapped out by the time it comes. As far as the new golf software, we ended up with a few options for this. One, we look at entirely different new company. And if you're interested, actually look at a couple of other, or software companies, and one would be T-Snap. And I actually really love their concept, especially being a millennial, I can completely see the benefits of using it. They're all iCloud-based, they use iPads, and they're also on cellular data, so the benefit of that would be you're using your iPad or whatnot, and say you have a power outage, you're not going to lose service, and you're still going to be able to use their software. You can also access their software on your computers as well, just like you would if you had their website. And they have a whole package as well that is email marketing, marketing in general. So there's a lot of benefits and negatives that we really liked, but ultimately, it came down to money and we just couldn't justify it. We would have been looking at paying about seventy-five hundred a year for their software and all their services. And so, we decided to just stick with what we currently have, which is called ActiveGen, and it's actually through GolfNow. And within them, we had a couple of options through them. And the first one, we, we could pay a flat fee of seven hundred and fifty for the software, plus an additional three hundred or so for credit card hardware, which also allow you to do the chip card readers as well. And then you have the option where besides that, you have annual fee. And or if you didn't want to do annual fee, you could do a thing which a lot of them do actually now called T-Time Trade. And that's actually what we're currently set up with, with the ActiveGen. Essentially, how that works is right now, we're advertised on GolfNow's website. So say Mark wanted to go golfing one morning, he could go to golfnow.com, look up one for a golf course, and it will pop up, and then it will say book T-Time now. He can then go in, book his T-Time. It's actually, the rate up there is discounted from what we sell at the clubhouse. So he can book his T-Time, pay for it there, and he's good to go. Now, on the flip side of that, that money that he just paid, we'll never see it here. It actually goes right back to GolfNow, and that's kind of the trade, but you don't have those annual fees. And so our other option was we could keep our ActiveGen, which we have out there right now, and just update it to the current version, 2016, 2017 version. We could keep that T-Time trade that we already had in place, because we grandfathered in with that, and there'd be no additional cost to us other than that T-Time trade. The other thing was Vantage, who is their current credit card processing company that they worked with. All we had to do there, besides the account with them, there was no smart app cost or anything like that. And all it is is the generic, you know, they use a certain amount per transaction out there, which was, I mean, two point five percent plus some cents. So that's what we elected to do. We received the credit card hardware just last week on Thursday, so that's good to go. And right now, we're just waiting on GolfNow to type a few things on there then, before we get to go ahead to go ahead and do the upgrade and get the computers swapped out. So we're getting there. I hope to have that done either at the end of this week or I think next week, but unfortunately, it's out of my hands, not on their calendar right now, but we're going in the right direction and getting it figured out, so.
Do they assist you with installing that software, getting the computer set up and functioning, and is that part of?
Yes, we'll have our OIC reach, help us to swap an actual computer out. And then their IT guys will help us out, and I believe they can do it, they can do it remotely, and then depending on where you're located, all that, they can actually come out.
So the ActiveGen, that's a point of sale for all your, all your point of sale stuff?
Yes.
And reports, you get all those reports? Does it track rounds played in that?
Yes, it has the point seven T-sheets, so within the reports, it tracks all that as well.
And it would tell you whether it's remembers your painting, and then you put all that, at the end of the day, somebody lost all of it and puts it in, so you can get good printouts in the future of what's going on?
Mm-hmm.
Was the company back for the slide this week?
Was it? Well, I was kind of confused the other day on their end, but I was working with one gentleman that was from sales, and then another gentleman that was from IT, and there was one point, one was telling me one thing, and the other was telling me the opposite of what the one just told me, so it got really confusing, but we got it sorted out. And so, there, I guess there's just some things on their end that they're wanting to have, almost like we're having a Kiwi. So we're trying to explain to them, so whatever, fix whatever is on their end, or deal with whatever is on their end, and then close the paper, and we're good to go, ready to go. It sounded like there was a couple of things that had to be worked out too with the credit card company, you know, between, between the credit card company and GolfNow, that they had to get, you know, or share or work out.
Okay, what about the water supply to the pool, was it?
They, the company showed up, it was Wednesday morning, they started work Wednesday, it was last week. And then they ended up running into an issue with pieces of equipment they were using, and then like how it was turning out. So they went back to their headquarters in Chicago to get any piece of equipment, and much the same, it's usually back, or actually right about now, and they're going to start finishing up tomorrow.
Any other questions for Kate, recreation?
Back to the golf course. You have most of the help lined up for this summer in terms of clubhouse staff and throwing and all of that?
Yes, we have, we've had a lot of applicants come in. We're just kind of waiting for, you know, grassy area and whatnot for bowling operations. Left house side of it, I mean, I know for sure we're going to be set for the summer. The problem is, you know, we need to be open kind of regularly right now. And I don't have anyone with that supply that's available, so we're kind of stuck being open on weekends right now. Tell Kate someone that has that availability.
All this nice weather, remember in the end?
Honor system. Speed your arm.
Any active for, for a while?
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to thirteen others. Any others, council members?
I'd like to request that Chief Bergen or his staff take a look at the property on South First, corner lot, South First and K-4. Broken trampoline in the front yard that you could probably move up to, freestanding pool, collection of stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other others? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Second, say it all as they like.
Aye.
Close same sign.